Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Hutchinson, Deputy Mayor and Chair of the Committee of Adjustment. This is the September the 8th, 2020 Committee of Adjustment Meeting. We're using audio only today to conduct this meeting. Video is not possible at this time due to the limited bandwidth in some areas of West Gray. Bandwidth is challenging our ability to do a complete video broadcast. So today we're using audio. We call in the meeting to order at 1:01. All members of the committee are present as indicated through their login. Counselor Townsend has sent his regrets. We do have quorum. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the West Gray website, www.westgray.com. The technology for this meeting is being managed by the West Gray staff. Please refrain from clicking buttons throughout the meeting unless prompted. Before we continue, I'm asking Supervisor Cody Hewlett to provide an overview of some of the other key points for this meeting. Supervisor Hewlett.
Thank you, Chair. If you get disconnected at any time during the meeting, you can dial 1-647-558-0588 and enter the meeting ID 85652154785. Both members of council and staff have been briefed on the various features of the Zoom meeting software, and we'll be using the raise their hand function to speak, using the green checkmark button to vote in favor of a motion and the red X to vote against. Each member of council will then be called upon verbally to confirm their vote for the benefit of any guests who has joined us over the phone rather than using the online software. If you have any technical issues throughout the meeting, send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, and I will attempt to assist you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. That will take us to item number two, still point a secretary treasurer and deputy secretary treasurer. If I could ask the clerk to please read the motion.
Thank you, Chair. The recommendation is that West Gray Committee of Adjustment hereby appoints Genevieve Charbock to the position of Secretary Treasurer and Lindsay Glazer to the position of Deputy Secretary Treasurer for the Committee of Adjustment.
This time I'd like to ask for a mover. Sorry about that. This time I'd ask for a mover. Mayor Robinson has indicated that she would move that motion. And could I get a second or please with the checkmark? Counselor Hamilton, are you seconding that motion?
Counselor Hamilton, yes, I second the motion.
Thank you. One moment, please. Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Mayor Robinson, I apologize. You are moving that motion?
Yes, I'm Mayor Christine Robinson, and I am moving this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And that is seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Now we'll call the to the vote. If you could indicate with a checkmark. Yeah. Counselor Shea, you have a question?
Yes, it's Counselor Shea. I'm just curious, have we, who was the Secretary Treasurer and Deputy Secretary Treasurer previously?
Well, actually, I'll have to take care. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for that question. Remember Shea, the former clerk that retired was the Secretary Treasurer. And at that point in time, the planner was appointed as the Deputy Secretary Treasurer to make sure there was coverage throughout that retirement and recruitment process. But the planner has a significant role to play in Committee of the Adjustment meetings and would prefer to focus on the planning perspective rather than the Secretary Treasurer role as well.
Okay, thank you. Any follow up here, Counselor Shea?
No, thank you very much.
All right, so we're calling the motion to vote, and I, as the Chair, Deputy Mayor Tom Hutchinson, am in favor of this motion. And I will go down to Counselor Hutchinson. Please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Mayor Robinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
Counselor Shea, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
And Counselor Herger, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Thank you. Okay, clerk, if you could read that, please. Or motion carried. I apologize, yes. Yeah, please.
Thank you. The purpose of today's Committee of Adjustment meeting is to allow the presentation of minor variance and severance applications and to allow interested members of the public the opportunity to ask questions or offer comments with regard to the application. There is a public registry located online with Recreation Supervisor Hewlett. And if any member of the public would like to be notified in writing of the decision on the applications, they are to provide their name and mailing address to Mr. Hewlett via email or telephone for the registry. This will also entitle one to be advised of possible local planning appeal tribunal hearing in the event any decision on any application is appealed. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us on to item number four. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or any general nature thereof you could indicate with a checkmark? Supervisor Hewlett, do you see any members indicating?
At this time, I do not see any members indicating.
Okay, thank you. If there is during the meeting, you can just fill out the appropriate paperwork and please file with the clerk. But seeing none, we'll move right on to item number five, which is the approval of the minutes from the July 14th, 2020 meeting. Clerk, if you could read the motion, please.
Recommendation is that the municipality of West Gray Committee of Adjustment hereby adopts the minutes of July 14th, 2020 as circulated.
Could I get a mover for that, please? Counselor Herger, are you moving?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton, are you seconding that?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Thank you. So any questions or comments from the minutes or from the committee? Seeing none, you don't see any there, Supervisor Hewlett?
I am not seeing any members at this point.
Thank you. So I'll call the motion. All those in favor, please indicate with a checkmark. Those opposed, indicate with a red X, please. Okay, as Chair, I, Tom Hutchinson, am in favor of the motion. Counselor Hurt, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shea, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Mayor Robinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
And Counselor Hutchinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Thank you. Motion carried. If I could get all the members of the committee to please clear their dashboards, please. Thank you. And that takes us to item number six. If I could get Planner Spencer to please read the report, present the report.
My apologies, Mr. Chair, I was muted. This application is with respect to File A022020, which is a minor variance application located at Plan 55, Lot 1, registered Plan 17R1881, specifically Part 1, known municipally as 341013-Grey Road 28. The purpose and effect of this application is to vary the requirements of subsection 6142 of the municipality of West Gray zoning bylaw 37-2006 to increase the maximum permitted growth floor area of an accessory structure from 93 square meters to 223 square meters, the effect of which will permit the construction of an accessory structure on the subject lands. Recommendation by staff is that the Committee of Adjustment received the report and recommend approval of the minor variance A022020. Application did receive comments from the County of Gray Planning and Development Department, who have no concerns with the subject application and request notice of decision in addition to those comments provided by the Sauguin Valley Conservation Authority, who again have no concerns with respect to the application and do request notice of the decision. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Do the committee members have any questions or comments on this? If so, please indicate by raising your hand. Counselor Hutchinson? Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Counselor Hutchinson, yeah, I just have a couple of minor questions. One is, I was curious why there wasn't a diagram associated with this application. Is that, it's not compulsory?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the application does require to have a sketch submitted that clearly demonstrates the location of the building. Unfortunately, due to accessibility reasons, it is, was not circulated with the agenda because it's not accessible.
You mean the document couldn't be uploaded to the agenda? Is that what you mean by not accessible?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, the application absolutely had a clear sketch. However, for AODA compliance, it's not accessible in terms of being able to publish it on the internet. But we have a sketch on file that clearly demonstrates the location of the structure.
Okay, I just, I just found, I like to see the diagram in the application. That's also, I guess in the future, we'll just have to reach out and ask for that if it's not included. One other, a couple of things. In the Conservation Authority's response to the report under delegated responsibility and advisory comments, somehow the municipality of Greyhounds got in there, and I think that's a typo, which we should let them know that shouldn't be in there. If you see it on page 17 of 93 on our reporters' page, what is on their report, page 17, no, it's page 17 of their report, or two of three, I guess, of their report. It's in that bold section, makes reference to Greyhounds. I don't think that's supposed to be there. And one final comment, I just wondered, under the, just before the summary, there, it says, "This parcel is not within the Sauguin Valley Conservation Authority proximal screening area associated with Ontario Regulation 169/06. As such, development plan or site alteration within these areas does not require the permission from Sauguin Valley Conservation Authority prior to carrying out the work." So I'm just wondering, why are they commenting if they're, if it's not within their screening area? Am I missing something there? I'm not sure why they're commenting.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a contractual obligation from the provincial level that the SBCA comments on files. It's often characteristic that sometimes a permit from conservation is not required prior to the provision of a building permit. However, that does not negate their delegated responsibility from the province.
Thank you.
All right, so, okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's it, I think, for me.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hutchinson, if you could clear your board. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, Chair Hutchinson. Just a couple of questions in follow up to Counselor Hutchinson's question about the accessibility of the document. Are there any other documents that we would usually receive that we didn't receive because of accessibility today?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, there are none.
Thank you. And in future, could we make reference either in the report or, just so we would be cued to ask for more information if it, if it was missing, maybe there could be a list that says such and such documents are available, please ask staff. That would be, that'd be helpful. And then my only other question is, it mentions in the report about, in our staff report about providing the existing accessory structure is removed as indicated by the applicant. So does that become part of conditional approval, or how is that articulated in the approval moving forward?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Minor variance applications do not come associated with conditions the same as a severance application.
Okay.
So essentially, the minor variance subject to appeal would be approved, should that be the choice of committee. But no, it would not be attached as a condition. However, that being said, a building permit for this structure could not be issued without that other structure being removed, as it would be over lot coverage on the property.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions from the committee? Counselor Shea?
Counselor Shea speaking. Going back to the question about the availability of accessible or inaccessible documents and drawings, I see further in our agenda that there are drawings provided. Why are those drawings provided? Do they not have the same accessibility challenges?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not that I understand from the AODA requirements that they have an accessibility issue. It was particularly the other drawing in question. But of course, council and/or committee is always welcome to ask for additional information in terms of sketches at any time. Every application must be accompanied by a logical drawing in order for it to be deemed a complete application.
I, I agree that I don't think this process where we do not receive the drawings enables us to do our job properly. So I'm uncomfortable approving an application that I don't have all of the pertinent documents for. So I'm not sure that I can support this approval at this time.
Okay, just to follow up there, Counselor Shea, to your question and Counselor Hamilton, as well as probably the full committee. It's been brought to my attention, Mr. Zettel, Jonathan Zettel is actually working on that and should be converting all the docs. So moving forward, things should be getting a little bit better for all of us. We're all aware there's been some challenges to get where we are. Is there any other questions from any committee members? And seeing none, we're going to go to the public portion now. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak in favor of this application? And I'm going to ask Supervisor Hewlett to see if we received any indication or if there's anybody on your screen that wishes to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing may do so by raising their hand, by clicking the raise their hand in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. If they have joined us on a computer or on a tablet device, if they have joined us over the phone, you can press star nine. Alternatively, you can send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
Okay. See anything there, Supervisor Hewlett?
At this time, I am not seeing any members of the public wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, then what we'll do is we'll ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this application. Supervisor Hewlett, please.
Members of the public wishing to speak in opposition, the same steps as before. You can do so by raising your hand, which is in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. If you have joined us on a computer or tablet device, if you are joining us over the phone, you can press star nine. Alternatively, send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
You have anybody on your screen there, Supervisor Hewlett? Checkmark or hand raised?
At this time, I'm not seeing any members of the public wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. To thank everybody who was in attendance for this, this item. And what we're going to do is go to the vote now. So we'll call, I'm looking for a mover to move this. Counselor Hutchinson, you had a question?
Yes, Counselor Hutchinson, just, could I ask that maybe our planner send us a copy, an email copy of the sketch? I trust that our staff has the, has the diagram and looked at it and seen that it's, it's okay. So I trust that they've, they've done their job there. But it would mind a follow up copy of the diagram, just so we have a look at it, just for our own reference, so. Yeah, thanks.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel able to send that sketch to council and/or committee at any point in time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I meant to go to Planner Spencer to, to read the motion before us, please.
Recommendation is to set File A022020 be approved, the purpose and effect of which will vary the requirements of subsection 6142 of the municipality of West Gray zoning bylaw 37-2006, which will increase the maximum permitted growth floor area of an accessory structure from 93 square meters to 223 square meters, the effect of which will permit the construction of accessory structure on the subject lands. In making the decision upon this application for minor variance, the committee must be satisfied that matters pursuant to Section 45 of the Act have been satisfied, that the proposal is consistent with the provincial policy statement, that the variance is, is and maintains the general intent and purpose of the official plan, that the variance is minor in nature and maintains the intent and purpose of the municipality's zoning bylaw number 37-2006, that the variance is considered minor in nature, and that represents an appropriate and desirable use of the land, buildings, and structures.
Thank you. Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Yes, Counselor Hutchinson moves the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second for this motion? Supervisor Hewlett, do you see any?
I see that Counselor Shea is showing a checkmark.
Counselor Shea, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Shea, I second the motion.
Thank you. So any questions or comments from the committee on this motion? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify with a checkmark. Those opposed with an X. Okay, and I'll go as Chair Tom Hutchinson. I'm in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Mayor Robinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
You, Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shea, no.
Counselor Herger, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Thank you. So the motion's carried. Please clear your dashboards. Planner Spencer, you have a follow up?
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Yeah, that takes us to item number seven. If I could get Planner Spencer to please present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public meeting for Committee of Adjustments. It's called under Section 53 of the Planning Act, 1990 as amended with respect to an application for consent known as File B032020 affecting lands owned by 1993934Ontario Inc., described as being property municipally known as 502413-Concession 10-NDR in the geographic township of Bentick in the municipality of West Gray. The notice of this public meeting was mailed by standard class mail on the 19th of August 2020 to the property owner and to all property owners with 120 meters of the subject property, in addition to all agencies and persons identified in the Planning Act. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality of West Gray before the consent is passed, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the municipality to the local planning appeals tribunal. Any person attending today's meeting for this application should provide their full name and address to the municipality prior to the end of this meeting. It is important to note that if you wish to be mailed a notice of the decision and you do not live within 120 meters of the subject property, you must provide your request in writing to the planning department. Providing your main email address and contact information does not represent your written request. Again, as stated, this is File B032020. The applicant has applied for consent to create a new rural lot and retain a rural lot. The severed parcel would be approximately 1.9 hectares in size, and the retained parcel would be approximately 39 hectares in size. Both lots have access on Concession 10-NDR. Recommendation from the planning department, in addition to comments from authorities having jurisdiction, County of Gray Planning and Development Department has commented and risked and request written notice of decision. In addition to the Sauguin Valley Conservation Authority also requests written notice of decision. No concerns were identified as part of their planning report. As such, the next step would be, recommendation from the planner is that committee provide provisional consent for File B032020 based on the following conditions: payment of the zoning bylaw amendment, application fee to the municipality of West Gray, passage of a zoning bylaw amendment, payment of the parkland dedication fee, and payment and receipt of an entrance permit by the applicant. If nothing further.
Thank you. Now, is there any questions from the committee regarding this? Counselor Hutchinson?
Yeah, Counselor Hutchinson, just, just curious. Yeah, Counselor Hutchinson, just, just curious. It does say in the, in the package that the, both properties have access on the concession ten. I also realize that the one property that's being severed off runs parallel to the concession side road thirty. I'm just, I just want to make sure that the applicant understands that side road thirty is not a maintained road. So in the future, if there's ever to be a building put on there, they would have to access off concession ten rather than offside road thirty. Is that correct, Planner Spencer?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee on this? Supervisor Hewlett, do you see any?
I'm not seeing any questions from committee.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we're going to turn it over to the public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application, you could indicate by raising your hand or go through Supervisor Hewlett, if anybody's approached you or... Supervisor Hewlett?
At this time, I'm not seeing any members of the public who would like to speak.
Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go to the portion where we, anybody in the public that would like to speak in opposition of this Supervisor Hewlett received any indicators or any correspondence on that.
At this time, I'm not. No, we have just had one member of the public raise their hand to speak. I can unmute them.
We do have, okay, we do have one, one public member like to speak to it?
Yes, Dave Lang is what his name is appearing on the participant list.
Okay, so we'll get you unmuted there, Mr. Lang. And if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Mr. Lang, you may be receiving a pop-up message on your computer saying that the host would like to unmute you.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay. You can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Yeah, so for the record, my name's David Lang, and I, I should mention that I, I do reside at lot twenty-eight, which is sort of on the south side of the road from the subject lot, and one lot down, or to the, to the west. I guess one of the issues that was raised earlier was that the access was stated to be on concession ten NDR. However, there, there is a very large access currently constructed, about, I would say, fifty feet wide, off side road thirty, which I understand there has not been a permit for. So that's, that's an issue there, for sure. The other thing is, like, just as a, a general issue, I look at the lot, which is directly to the south of this lot, which is lot thirty, and I see that there's already been four severances on it. So that one hundred acres is now divided into four lots. I'm a little bit concerned that, that the larger retained portion here will be sort of subject to further severances in the future, which, you know, I think now we could have potentially, you know, eight lots out of what were once two farm lots. And it's, it's changing the nature of, of the area to the point where I think you're going to encounter things like more complaints about livestock noises. And and then around here, I know, for example, that come the first week of November, it's like a war broke out, and I can see these people that would have these estate lots would be saying, we don't think that this, you know, hunting, we're gun hunting during deer season is appropriate anymore in this kind of a high-density area. So those are the kind of concerns I have. I think we've had in this particular piece of road, a number of severances, and it's probably enough. That's, that's my, that's all I got to say with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Appreciate your comments. Anything to follow up or follow through? Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, these lands are designated as rural lands. And yes, the permissive policies under the County of Gray official plan do permit the severance of original farm parcels, provided a certain density has not been exceeded. In this case, the density has not been exceeded on this lot. So technically, yes, in future, if there was an open road, open and maintained, these individuals could potentially apply severance. However, they must maintain minimum distance separation requirements from the existing operating agricultural lands and livestock facilities in the area, which that was conducted, and they were to have met minimum distance separation requirements. But any further lot creation will also be subject to that test. Nothing further.
Thank you, Planner Spencer. Supervisor Hewlett, do you see any further? Yes, I do. Mr. Tremble? Mr. Tremble, we'll get you unmuted, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
My name's Kevin Tremble. I'm the applicant for the proposed severance. I just, Dave, I just want to confirm that there, our purpose is not to, to develop the property into further estate lots or anything like that. We're simply taking a, a farm that had sixty-five workable acres. It was divided into seven fields. We're, we're removing all the fence rows, and we're hoping to get about eighty-five workable acres, and then making it more accessible for, for a larger machines to get in and out of the, out of the property. So there's, there's no, no intent to, to further develop the, the property into more lots. That's all I had to, to note.
Thank you, Mr. Tremble. Planner Spencer, do you have any comment on that?
No, nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I see, Mr. Lang, I would like to have another comment. Supervisor Hewlett, you could unmute him, please.
Yes, I can. And I also have another comment from the public when we have a moment.
Okay, so thanks for that research, Mr. Tremble. You know, it's, it's, it's good to know that that will be retained as farmland. The, the, the question I have, though, is the retained lot, the larger lot that's intended to be retained, is, is there going to be a house built on that? It, it certainly looks like the driveway facility there is, is being sort of set up for a, for a house development of some kind. It's awful, an awful big open area for getting a combine in there.
Mr. Tremble, could you respond to that, please?
Yes, the, the, the entrance you see there is actually going to be access to the farm. So it's set up so we can get tractors and trailers in there for, for a cash cropper. There's, there's going to be no houses built on it. The severed area is actually the original house on the property up for, further to the west, at the top of the hill. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Anything further there, Mr. Lang?
I am muted. So given Mr. Tremble's comments, could there be some kind of a condition on the approval of the application stating that for some specified period of time, there'd be no development other than access to farm machinery on the retained portion?
Planner Spencer, could you comment to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only mechanism with which the committee could suggest that there be some sort of a zoning by law amendment placed on the property that would not permit the construction of another dwelling unit on that retained parcel, although I would not recommend that committee pass a zoning by law, or pass that as a condition of provisional consent, as I'd find it very hard to write a planning report that would defend that.
Okay, thank you, Planner Spencer. Anything further there, Mr. Lang?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Tremble?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. I see Counselor Hutchinson has his hand up, but Supervisor Hewlett has indicated we have another public that would like to, somebody in the public would like to speak to the matter. So I think we'll go there first, and then we'll follow up with Counselor Hutchinson. Supervisor Hewlett?
Yes, I have received a chat message from Fran Hatch. She, given the device that she's on, she's unable to raise her hand, but would like to speak. So I can unmute her at your request.
Please proceed.
Hello?
All right, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so regarding the adjoining property, Emil and Rosemary Friend, owners of the property just north of this development, we're concerned about the effects of the resloping of the land that is now taking place. We spoke with one of the, the Tremble brothers last week, and since talking to them, they, they did do some cleanup on one of our ancient maple trees, but it, it had been smothered by their, their dumping of, of earth. They corrected that, but there's still more debris that is piled up higher than what our boundary line is. We're concerned that when it rains, or we have some sort of snow or whatever, that all that debris is going to come down our hill. Also, there has been, the boundary line has been denigrated because the fence is now down, and it's, it's not clear where the boundary line is. And, and we're asking that a proper survey be done of this land, because even further down on our property where there's about a ten-foot drop now, I mean, we can't even walk to the edge without worrying about dropping down. They told us that that was going to be graded, but it needs to be graded i- in a way that it suits our property too, because we, we can't have that huge drop that's there. Um, is there something else? What, what else did we want to say here?
The boundary should be surveyed.
Yeah. Yeah, it should, it, it should have been surveyed. They said, I, I believe it was Jason that we spoke with. He said that he had found the previous surveyor's marks that had been done from nineteen seventy-three, which we did. And he said that he used his GPS marker. But what I'm saying is, our fence has been destroyed, so the, the boundary is gone now. And we're just concerned about how this property is going to be left and what's going to happen on our side.
Is Mr. Hatcher, I can't hear, if it's Mr. Hatcher, we'll need you to state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Mr. Friend, Mr. Emil Friend.
I'm sorry.
Emil Friend. Yeah, Emil Friend, who is the registered property owner.
Okay.
And Rosemary Friend. We're just, we're using a different, a different computer that has the Zoom on it.
Well, thank you for the clarification, because I thought I misunderstood at the beginning, but that's great.
I'm sorry, but with our computer didn't have this Zoom capability, so.
Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you for clarification.
Okay.
Well, maybe I'll ask Mr. Kevin Tremble for a response to your concerns there while he's still on the line with us.
Hi, thanks, Rosemary. Yeah, you were talking to my brother Jason. He kind of updated me on, on the situation, and he, he thought he had talked to you and resolved, resolved the issues there. For sure, we'll, we'll replace any damage to the fence, and it's going to be graded to, to an appropriate standard that, that suits both properties there. What, what we're doing there is creating access from one field to the other, so that machines can get down into the other field. I, I think it was a, it was the excavation fault on misunderstanding of the property lines when they started. But, but from what I understood is that they did clean it all up, and if there's any further damage to the, or any more damage to the fence, we'll for sure fix that.
Okay, well, the fence, the fence is down and rolled up in the debris, and they did clean the debris from the one large maple. However, the couple of trees beside it, debris is still piled up, and we're concerned that that will eventually kill those trees. Some huge boulders have rolled over onto our property, which nobody will be able to do anything with. And, I mean, that's not the biggest problem. We're more concerned about the grading and more concerned about the, the runoff if that property is higher, the elevation is higher. And we're more concerned about identifying the boundary line, because it seems to have been obliterated, and we can't really distinguish how far you've cut into the land. It, it, it's just not clear, because the fence is gone from there. So that's, that's an issue, and that's why we, I did say something about having a survey completed that we can see. We've pulled out the original document from nineteen seventy-three, and it's just, it, it's a little difficult to picture what you've done with what's on that paper. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, that's for sure. We, we have a copy of that survey as well, and that's what we would have went off of. And using that survey, I believe we can still put the fence back to where it was. It shouldn't be an issue, because the survey of the land hasn't changed.
Okay, so we, Emil was there yesterday and went and looked at the property, and, and these are the things that he noted when he came back. So, you know, this is why I want to bring them forward, because they're, obviously, they're of concern. Yeah, well, that's what he's, what I just said. Yeah, okay.
Planner Spencer, do you have anything to add into this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't have anything further to add. I think this is something that can be resolved between the two landowners themselves with respect to the location of the iron bars and the replacement of the fence. Really think it becomes an issue more related to bylaw enforcement if there happens to be an issue between the two that cannot be resolved. Nothing further.
Thank you. Anything further to add to that?
No, the major thing is the grading of the property, that the adjoining property is not higher than what it was before, so that we don't have the runoff problems. That's, that's the biggest issue of all.
Thank you. Anything further from, that you'd like to add to this, Mr. Tremble, or?
No, I, I think Planner Spencer set it, set it properly. If it's, if we don't fix it to your satisfaction, we can go another route. But I'm confident that we will, we'll, we'll make it back to its original state exactly how you, you want it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go to Counselor Hutchinson next.
Hey, Counselor Hutchinson, just a little bit of history, and maybe Mr. Zorynski or Director of structure can help me out here. Wasn't there, and it might have been before his time, and I'm sure it's before our planner's time, but there was some correction made of side road thirty, because when it, when it accessed on the concession ten, that it butted on to, it went on to the owner's property. So that was to be corrected and straightened out and whatnot. So I thought, when I look at that, that that was part of what was going on there. Mr. Lang questioned that, too. So I could be wrong, but I thought that was the area that there was some correction made there in the last little while. Maybe Maybe Mr. Zorinsky can, can clarify that if he's aware. If not, we may have to go back to our records on that.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You are correct, Counselor Hutchinson. That was completed, there's a registered plan on a file from July 16, 2019, with respect to the side road. So you are correct.
Okay, so, so that might have something to do with the way the road is sort of swings out. It comes, it comes out towards concession 10, and then it swings to the west, I think. So, Mr. Trumbull, I don't know where, exactly what he's been, what he's done versus what we've done in the past, but there, there is some consistency there, or whatever. There's some things going on. So that's just, as long as everybody's aware of that.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You are correct, that's exactly what that deviation in the property line represents, and that not really, doesn't really pose an issue with respect to this application, as there's sufficient, sufficient frontage for both the severed and retained parcels to have access through that side road entrance.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, if I could get you to just clear the X off, or is there something you'd like to discuss? It's just, you've still got a mark on the dash, thank you. Counselor Hergert, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a question. I was hoping that our Director of Infrastructure and Public Works could confirm that there would have been a grading permit issued for grading of this magnitude.
Director Swinski, you're on with us? Yes, we can, thank you.
I, I, I don't, I don't recall that there was a permit per se for grading with respect to this, but I can check back and report back to the committee if that is the will of the committee.
I would like to know that prior to rendering a decision. These are builders in our neighborhood, they know the rules, and it sounds like we should be taking a look at the grading that's already happened there, and that would, I believe, also fall under your jurisdiction for enforcement. So, yes, I'm looking to know if there is in fact a grading permit. It sounds, from the neighbor's perspective, that that's pretty serious and causes a drop-off of land there, let alone the runoff and erosion problem. But I think it is something that, I mean, we have a bylaw on the books, and we should be enforcing them. It seems like this is the time to enforce that one. Also, about the survey, having a plan registered in July of 2019 might only catch the front portion or the south portion of concession 10. It may not get to that back lot line. So Planner Spencer, is there any way to put some conditions on this, respecting a survey needing to be done and fence needing to be erected?
Planner Spencer, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If it is the will of committee, a survey would be required regardless for the newly created parcel. If there was the wish by committee to provide a condition with respect to the construction of a fence, that is possible. That would be the will of the committee at this point.
So those would just be conditions that would be, that could potentially be included for our thought?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay, I have one last question, Chair. The driveway to be constructed, Planner Spencer, can you tell me off of what road? I mean, the map that I have or the drawing that I have doesn't show where the driveway would be. Is that anticipated to be off of concession 10 or 30th Side Road?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Of the severed parcel, which contains the existing single detached dwelling unit, the entrance would need to come off of concession 10 NDR. There is sufficient room between the severed parcel and the retained parcel for an entrance to be added to concession 10 NDR for the existing retained parcel.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Anything further, Counselor Hergert?
Not at this time, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. See, Mr. Trumbull has his hand up again. Go ahead, Mr. Trumbull.
Thank you. Counselor Hergert, just to clarify there, the grading at the back of the property is still work in progress. So it's not, it's, they just started working on it a couple of weeks ago. And also, I'd really, really like if the grading didn't hold up the severance here. I don't know, maybe Planner Spencer can comment, but I don't think the grading issue is really relevant in the severance application. For sure, we want to make sure the grading is right at the end of the day, but I think they're two separate issues here. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would concur with the applicants that they are two separate issues. And I will also note that there is the ability for a landowner to do grading on their property. Again, however, the, under the building code, they cannot be diverting water to adjacent lands, as that's not legal. I don't know if our chief building official would like to comment to that further, but I do believe the issues are separate, and the individuals can sort the fence issue and grading issue out together.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to ask for CBO to make a comment on that. Go ahead, CBO shipwreck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, under the building code and our property standards bylaw, there are requirements for grading from one lot to another as well. The building code wouldn't necessarily apply unless they're actually asking or building some type of structure, but our property standards does have some requirements in it for drainage and grading. He would not require a grading permit if it was just completely within his own property, as long as he meets the requirements of the property standards. And if there was an issue with the property standards and the neighbor had a complaint, they could fill out the complaint process, and then bylaw enforcement would, would act on it. But I believe that the two neighbors would probably, you know, work things out, hopefully. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. I see, we have a speaking order, actually. Mr. Trumbull, do you want, do you have a comment to that, or before I go to Mr. Lang?
No, sorry, didn't I, forgot to unraise my hand.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Hey, if we could unmute Mr. Lang, please?
If I may, Mr. Chair, it appears as though Mr.
Okay. Yeah, it's gone. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter?
No, no, sorry, I, I must have been properly unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, yes, I just wanted to clarify. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. It's Mr. Lang, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
The, the comments have been that there is room for an entrance off concession 10 for the larger part of the severance, so the retained portion. In fact, there is already a monstrous entrance off Side Road 30, which, you know, is going to provide access for farm machinery and trailers and such. I just wanted to clarify that, because there seemed to be the thought that the entrance is concession 10, and it may well be that, that'll be where it ultimately goes, but right now, there's a substantial, very substantial entrance off Side Road 30 on the new lot.
Planner Spencer, do you have a comment?
It's a new entrance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I understand there is a farm entrance on Side Road 30. Under the definition of frontage in our zoning bylaw, their frontage would be determined as concession 10 NDR and not Side Road 30. Therefore, the entrance for the severed parcels will absolutely have an entrance off of concession 10 NDR. As a result, there is still sufficient room on that frontage parcel should the landowner wish to have an entrance for more permanent residence or something of that nature that would come off of that road. Nothing further.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. Lang?
Yeah, no, I just said, it's odd that so much investment was placed in creating this large entrance off Side Road 30, and I really think that an entrance on that steep hill of concession 10 would be, you know, not desirable.
Okay, thank you. If you could clear your dashboard there, Mr. Lang, so we're not missing anyone here, that'd be great, thank you. Is there any other comments in the public or from the committee members? Okay, Planner Spencer, if I could get you to read a motion on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application is with respect to file B 032020 affecting lands owned by 1993934 Ontario Inc., described as being 502413 concession 10 NDR in the geographic township of Bentick in the municipality of Westgrave. The recommendation is that committee provide provisional consent for file B 032020 based on the following conditions: payment of the zoning bylaw amendment fee to the municipality of Westgrave, the passing of a zoning bylaw amendment, the payment of the parkland dedication fee, and payment and receipt of an entrance permit for the severed parcel. Nothing further.
Thank you. So we're going to call this to vote here. If I could, would you like to move this? Counselor Hergert, before we call?
Yes, I would also like to have the two conditions being the survey completed and the north fence erected. Those two conditions should also be placed in, and then I can be favorable and agreeable to this.
One moment, please. Clear, I'm going to get the clerk to comment on this first, Robert. Okay, well. Okay, so. Do you want, Planner Spencer, would you like to comment to the question then? I just want to, that's why I went to the clerk just for clarification, but.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So certainly, the condition with respect to the survey is required regardless to establish the actual legal boundaries of the severed parcel. It can be included as a condition of provisional consent. It would be required regardless. As for the fence component, that would have to be in agreement, that would have to be something settled between the landowners. I don't believe we have the power under the Act to actually include that as a condition that would be required to be represented before consent is finalized.
Thank you for your clarification. Anything further, Counselor Hergert?
So at this time, I will not be agreeable. I still don't have a final understanding about the grading permit. If there is, in fact, if one has been issued, that should have been done prior to any land being moved. And I believe that we have our own specific grading bylaw, separate and apart from the Ontario Building Code. So I'll look for, for staff to bring me back that information. At this, I won't be moving it, thank you.
Okay, well, we have a motion in front of us, so it's at that time, I guess, if you're opposed, then you could signify with an X, but I believe we have a movers, Counselor Hamilton, you had your hand up to move this?
Yes, Chair, I will move this motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second for this motion? Counselor Hutchinson, are you second in this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson, yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from the committee on this motion? Signify with raising your hand, please. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that I hear the concerns, and they're important concerns. However, staff have provided a way through managing those concerns, and I don't think holding up this application is the appropriate way to address those concerns. So I really hope as neighbors that they are able to work out those concerns and that the counselor can receive information they are looking for, and, and we do have a process forward to work those through, because they are important. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, I'm taking that as a comment, Counselor Hamilton. And Counselor Hutchinson, you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, just a comment, first of all, or a question. Is the request of a survey, then, is that part of the motion? I don't, that wasn't part of the original motion, I don't believe that they were requesting a survey.
So we could have the, it read one more time for clarity, if you would like it?
Yes, and then I have another comment I'd like to.
Okay, well, let's do your, we'll do your question here, and then we can go back to the reading the motion.
Okay, so my other, my other comment was, maybe our director, Mr. Zorinsky, along with our road supervisor, Mr. Cook, could take a look at the entrance. We, since we, we seem to have entrances coming off Side Road 30, and we have entries coming off Side Road, or concession 10, maybe, and maybe with the applicant, they could just take a look and make sure everything's kosher and that we've got, you know, we've got culverts in place, and with this deviation, that's been corrected. Maybe we need to look and make sure that that's, that's done right, and, and just, just sort of resolve some, any, any issues there.
Thank you. Director Swinski, could you comment to that?
Can I just add something to that, then?
Absolutely, Counselor Hutchinson.
Well, I'm not really, I'm not saying make this a condition as the, of the, of the applicant, just, just maybe a staff, staff motion, or something that staff can look into, but it does not be part of the original.
Okay, it's more of a direction, and just to make sure that there's some follow-up on what you're requesting. Are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, Planner Spencer, you have a comment to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, there is the requirement that's on the table at the moment to require an entrance permit as a condition of provisional consent. As part of the entrance permit process, the roads department does go out, inspect, and discuss whether or not culverts are required. I think a note to verify the entrance on 30th Side Road and to understand that there's no covert or drainage issues with respect to the road deviation would be warranted at that time.
Okay, thank you. Now, just for, you want to clear your dashboard there, Planner Spencer, please? And just for everyone's clarity, we're going to have the motion read again, so we know what, what's before us. Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is with respect to application B 032020 affecting lands owned by 1993934 Ontario Inc., described as being 502413 concession 10 NDR in the geographic township of Bentick, the municipality of Westgrave.
Thank you.
Would you like the condition, Ms. Park?
I apologize.
With the conditions, so the recommendation is that committee provide provisional consent for file B 032020 with the following conditions: payment of the zoning bylaw amendment fee to the municipality of Westgrave, passing of a zoning bylaw amendment, payment of a parkland dedication fee, and payment and receipt of an entrance permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor signify with a check mark. Those opposed indicate with an X mark. Supervisor Gillett, do you see all the committee members? I do now, thank you. Okay, as Chair, I, Tom Hutchinson, am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you vote, please. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Mayor Robinson, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
You, Counselor Shea, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Shea, yes.
Counselor Herger, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Herger, no.
Motion has carried. Planner Spencer, if you could read recommendation, please.
The recommendation is with respect to the West Gray Committee of Adjustment receiving report regarding B 032020 for 1993934 Ontario Inc., providing provisional consent subject to conditions.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our agenda. Planner Spencer, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public meeting for Committee of Adjustment related to Section 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, respecting two applications for consent being filed B 052020, B 062020 affecting lands owned by Shamadon Resorts, Inc. The municipal address of the property is 231764 concession 2 WGR. This notice of public meeting has been mailed by standard class mail on the 19th day of August 2020 to the property owner and to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, in addition to all agencies and persons identified in the Planning Act. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality of West Gray before the consent is passed, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the municipality to the local training appeals, planning appeals tribunal. Any person attending today's meeting for this application needs to provide their name and address to the municipality prior to leaving the meeting. It is important to note that if you wish to be mailed a notice of decision and you do not live within 120 meters of the subject property, you must provide your request in writing to the planning department. Providing your name and address only does not represent your written request. The purpose of this application is for two consents to sever a portion of the existing rural lots, retain a rural lot, and create a right-of-way for the newly created parcel. The right-of-way is identified as Part 1 on the applicant's draft survey and will provide access to the newly created Part 2. Comments have been received from the County of Gray. In addition to the Sawgiin Valley Conservation Authority, who have requested notice of decisions but do not have concerns with the application, one comment made by the County of Gray Planning Department was with respect to the provision of a singular entrance that does not require a right-of-way to the property if an entrance permit could be provided. The next step is that committee provide provisional consent recommended for file B 052020 and B 062020 based on the condition that both applications pay the parkland dedication fee. And nothing further.
Thank you. Is there any questions from, or comments from the committee members on this? Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson here. Yeah, I think it might be just a typo, but under the Planner Spencer's report, under recommendation, it reads, "The West Gray Committee of Adjustment receives the report B 05/2020 and B 06/2020 Ward Neal wherein Planner L. Spencer recommends provisional approval of consent, application number B 05 and B 06." Is that Neil Ward's name supposed to be in there? Because he is, there is an application for him further down in our package.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, you are correct, Counselor Hutchinson. That is an error. It should be reflected of Shamadon Resort.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Hutchinson?
No, I don't believe so.
Any other committee members wishing to make a comment or have a question before we go to the public? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Supervisor Hewlett, have you received any indication or have you received any correspondence on your screen?
Similar to mentioned previously in the meeting, members of the public wishing to make comment during this time can do so by pressing the raise your hand function in the bottom right hand corner of your screen, or if you have joined us via phone, pressing star nine. Alternatively, you can also send a chat message to myself. At this time, I am not seeing any members of the public who would like to make comment.
Okay, thank you. This time, is there anyone in the public wishes to speak in opposition of this? And again, Supervisor Hewlett, if you've received any information or indication?
I did just receive a chat message from a Margaret that she had a comment. I can unmute her at your request.
From, I'm sorry?
Margaret?
Okay.
I just have a first name.
Okay, that's fine. You can unmute, and then we'll get Margaret on.
Hello?
Hi, Margaret.
Yes, this is Margaret. I just have a question.
I'm sorry, Margaret, we couldn't hear your full name, please. We'll need that for the record.
Yep, that's fine. The last name is Kraler. It is spelled K R E L L E R.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So one portion of this, to me, it looks like Shamadon Park wants to be severed into two parcels, and they will be retaining the one parcel for the, as a campground, and the other parcel as residential. So will it be zoned then, that one portion, as residential, or how will that be zoned?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this moment in time, the recommendation that stands is not to rezone the property. I will suggest that there is a very significant zone that goes along with the balance of the entire parcel at this time, that limits the dwelling units on the property and the number of campsites that are permitted. There are also a number of hazard lands on the property that would preclude the ability for further development of the campground to be conducted within those hazard areas. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Any follow up on that?
My only question was if this is to be residential, what the intention is, do we need to know what the intention is from Shamadon Park, or what this parcel is for? And is it, and will it be zoned then residential, if that's what their intention is, because they're separating that residential portion from the camp?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this moment in time, there is not a recommendation to rezone the property. The intent of the application is, I've been advised by the applicant's agent, it's simply for financing purposes to separate the residential component from the commercial. Should it be the will of the committee, there certainly could be a condition attached to this consent that would require that the property is rezoned to residential on the northern portion, or sorry, the southern portion. Nothing further.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Kraler?
It was, it's only just because my only concern is that if it, if this is, stays as the same zoning as an open space and not residential, that it gives it opportunity to, to have further development, which will then have impact for the number of people that go down the road. It's just for future planning that if it, because it just leaves it open if it's left as an open space, zoned as an open space.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning staff have no concerns with respect to the addition of their request for a zoning bylaw amendment. Should that be the will of the committee?
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Kraler?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public that you can see Supervisor Hewlett?
At this time, I, Mary Lou would like to speak.
I'm sorry?
Mary Lou would like to speak, sorry. That popped up currently.
Mary Lou, okay. Go ahead, Mary Lou.
Mary Lou, you may be receiving a pop-up saying that the host would like to unmute you. If you could just click unmute on that pop-up. There you go, you're alive.
And before you go, Mary Lou, if I could just get you to state your name for the record, we'd appreciate that. Thank you. Mary Lou? She's unmuted.
Her mic is unmuted on my end. I have a feeling that it may be.
Mary Lou, can you hear us on our iPad? Yeah, I was going to say, Mary Lou, you may have to unmute at your end. What about a call-in option? There's a comment. Supervisor Hewlett?
Yes, Mary Lou would like to call in. Welcome to, the number to call in is 16475588, and the meeting ID that you would need to enter is 85652154785.
If you're going to call in, Mary Lou, I wonder if you could just show us with a check mark, and then I'll go to Mayor Robinson, give you a minute to try to get in. Mayor Robinson has a comment. Go ahead, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you too, Planner Spencer. Planner Spencer, I wonder if you could just drill down a little further with regard to potential rezoning bylaw amendment. In terms of the, the application before us and the request, would that naturally have come before us as part of your recommendation, or is there a different stage in the process by which that would be considered? Thank you.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as part of provisional consent provided to applications, they are termed with conditions. In this case, I did not add the condition at this point in time that was related to a zoning bylaw amendment. They are two separate processes. However, it could be added as a condition of consent to alleviate concerns from neighbors that the property would be further developed than already is in its current form.
Anything further, Mayor Robinson?
Well, thank you, Planner Spencer. I appreciate the clarity. So this potential for a zoning amendment application would have come through the process regardless. It's just that it's being addressed earlier in the process at this stage, potentially, if it comes through in the motion.
Yes, typically with a condition of provisional consent, there are conditions associated with that consent. They have to be fulfilled within 12 months from the date of decision. So this is something that could have been requested without being tied to the actual consent applications. However, if it's the will of committee, there's nothing wrong tying that to, to an application and make it a condition of both B 05 and B 06 to ensure that it alleviates the concerns from adjacent landowners and limits the traffic impact if there were to be potential further development. It's also not, not unquestionable to think that this property could be sold at any point in time, although from what I understand, they're simply separating the two properties for financing purposes at this point in time. But if the property were to change hands, a zoning bylaw amendment may be helpful to ensure that the further development of the property does not happen at a future date in time. Thank you.
Anything further, Mayor Robinson?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Hewlett, were we able to get connected with Mayor Lou at all?
Well, we were going over Mayor Robinson's comment. I did see a phone number login. However, if it is Mary Lou, if you could press a star nine on your phone, that will raise your hand and let us know that it's you to be unmuted. Yes, it is Mary Lou. I can unmute her at your request, Chair.
Yeah, please proceed.
Hi, it's Mary Louisa Hamilton.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's Mary Louisa Hamilton.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the application, B 05 2020 and B 06. And on the map, I don't understand what B 06 2020 is. It's, it says it's irregular. And I just wondered, on the map, it doesn't say on the map, the map doesn't clearly say exactly where B 05 is and where B 06 is. I just would like, can I get clarification of that?
Absolutely. Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's an order of operations that this, both applications have to go through. So first file, B 05 2020 will sever the lands. B 06 2020 will follow, and it is the right-of-way that will go over the, to have access to the newly created parcel.
So it says it's 10, 10 meters. It's 10 meters deep by 274 on, for parcel six, and parcel five is 200, 2,294 deep by 1,394. So they're not the same. So I don't know how there could be, like, I'm just wondering what the process is there.
Yes, sorry, if I may, Mr. Chair. The way the application states before, they have to be registered in a certain order with your deeds for each newly created parcel. So the one parcel has to be described as stands now, and then it still stands as that one parcel creating the right-of-way. It still has the depth to that parcel. So while they aren't, in essence, once registered, going to be the same, it's describing the right-of-way to the newly created parcel, also looking at the parcel with respect to the actual original boundaries of that parcel.
Anything further, Mary Lou?
I don't, I don't understand that, but anyway, yes, actually, Shamadon Park is, they advertise as being a wilderness family resort. And I guess what puzzles me is if this, it looks to me like all the wooded area is being removed, and it's actually decreasing the size of the park substantially by almost like 50%. So I'm just wondering if it's still going to be functioning as a wilderness family campground, or I would really like to know what the long-term plans are for, for this area, if this is, if this goes ahead.
Planner Spencer, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, I'm not sure what the overall long-term implications are for the landowner in terms of how long their tenure of ownership they intend to have. As I stated previously, what I understand from them is that they're going to continue operating as is, but they're separating these two parcels for financing purposes. It is still zoned very specifically to limit the number of dwelling units on this overall parcel, in addition to the number of campsites. There's been no mention that there's going to be the removal of trees on the property at this time.
No, I wasn't referring to the removal of trees. I was just stating that the campground sort of, with this severance, the campground, it's, the area where, for the wilderness, has been reduced substantially. If you know what I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're, you're talking about the size of the area for part one as it relates to the overall campground, if I stand fair? Okay. I understand your point. This is the desire of the applicant and property owner, but this does still allow them to have the limit, like, the limitation of number of sites on the property. That has not changed at this point in time. However, should it be the will of council to go forward for a zoning bylaw amendment, the number of campsites on the property may need to be reconsidered at that time.
Right, right. If there was an application for something different to happen on Shamadon Park, as property owners quite close by, would as property owners quite close by, would we have, would our application, or would our dissent to that, would that have as much impact if this wooded area provided a buffer between them and the, and them and us?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if there was a zoning bylaw amendment application on this property, would be notified on a similar format that you've been notified for the consent application. If you, I'm not sure how close you are to the property. If you're outside of that 120-meter boundary from their property line, I'd recommend that you request to be notified. That would be a public process, however, and again, the issues with respect to how many campsites are permitted on the property and limitation of the use for the residential portion of the property would be addressed as part of that zoning bylaw amendment.
Has, has Mr. Sham given any indication to you? Or is he online and available to ask whether, like, what his long-term plans are for the other portions?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not clear whether the applicant or his agent are on the call at this point in time. Oh, I do see his agent. Mr. Ford is on the call.
Okay. I just wondered if he'd like to respond to that?
Yeah. Yeah, this, we have to go through Planner Spencer for those comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As previously stated, the only indication that I've been given at this point in time with respect to this request from Sharmadon is essentially to separate the parcels from residential to the campground itself for financing purposes. That's the only educational habit I can provide at this time.
So then, does that, for financial purposes, then, does that mean that there is going to be a fail coming up? Is that what that means, for financial purposes?
If I may, Mr. Chair, it's for financing purposes, I believe, because there's a different assessed value for the residential component to the campground component, as I understand it. As I've been told, there is no intent to sell the property in the near future.
But the residential is only at the very front part of the, it's only a, quite a small part at the front.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not clear on your question.
I, I guess, you said it needs to be severed for residential, but the residential represents about maybe 20% of the whole area that's being requested to be severed? So I guess, and, I guess my, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, if, if this is for residential, then why not just have it, the, the front part where it is residential? And then keep the, retain the wooded area, which would give the campground more of its wilderness family retreat that it, you know, it's, it's known for.
If I may, Mr. Chair, thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, there's three single detached dwelling units on the property that are going to be retained as part of part one, and that's approximately 20.3 hectares in size. This draft survey that has been provided by the applicant's agents are very clear where the boundaries are with respect to those dwelling units that are toward the ponds, almost in the middle, mid-center of the property.
Sorry?
Those three residential dwelling units are in the middle of the property, halfway back towards the pond.
Now, actually, they're at the, if you look at the map, they're, they're, they're actually very close to the front. They're within the, the first 25% of, of the length of the property.
Well, I have a survey in front of me, if I may, Mr. Chair, that shows, shows clearly where they're delineated on the property.
Beg your pardon?
The, the survey shows where they're delineated on the property. I'm not sure if I understand your concern correctly.
I, I guess my concern is, I'm wondering why the whole wooded area has to be severed if this is the residential? When the residential is actually only on the front 25%?
If I may, Mr. Chair, that's a, that's a discretion of the applicants in the form of what's that part one is going to look like.
Anything further to add to that, Mary Lou, or?
Well, I, I just, I'm just puzzled as to why this residential area is, is so substantially large? And it takes up a large portion of the actual park. That's what I don't understand. And it, it does provide a buffer between any future development on the south side of Sharmadon Park, which is the commercial part of it, between the buff, it provides a buffer between that and anything to the north.
If I may, Mr. Chair, perhaps if Mr. Ford would like to answer that question with respect to his applicant, that would be helpful. At this point in time, the planning recommendation is for approval of B05 and B06. If the applicant wishes to discuss with the neighboring landowner a different layout of the application, this application could be deferred. I would suspect that Mr. Ford may have something to say, but he's possibly having a hard time unmuting.
Mr. Ford, are you online with us? Okay, so just hang in there one, one moment, Mary Lou. But Counselor Herger has a question, so we'll go to Counselor Herger.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question as it relates to the planning report that we have received from our planner. And in there, let's see, page 64, about halfway through the page, it indicates that one livestock facility exists in the proximity to the proposed lot creation, and based on the information provided, that MDS is met. Are we at, are we very close? Like, if we would sever this residential, would that be very close to livestock facilities? And is there any new calculation to MDS if we sever these parcels?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chair, MDS1 calculations are conducted as required by the PPS for any new lot creation or land development of any nature. And by virtue of this, we have done the calculations with respect to the property based on the information provided and the barn size. So the actual minimum distance required is 196 meters, and an actual distance of 216 meters is provided, and that relates to the lot line itself.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, I'm at a loss because I don't have any mapping of any of this application. So similar to Counselor Shea earlier, unless I can get a, a copy of what part, what parts are what, then I won't be in favor of it. However, if somebody can email me that, I would take a look at it and consider it. Thank you.
Okay, anything to add to that? Counselor? Okay, thank you. Get back to you, Mary Lou. It doesn't look like Mr. Ford's gonna be active on the line or gonna be able to hook up. So do you have any further comments on this?
Mr. Chair, if I may interject.
Go ahead, Supervisor Hewitt.
I did receive a chat comment from, I believe it is Greg Ford, and he would like to make comment.
Okay. Actually, go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Mr. Ford.
Yeah.
Please state your name for the record, Mr. Ford.
My name is Greg Ford. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I would, Ms. Mary Lou asked a question regarding the, why the size of the residential portion is so large? And the, the answer is that we wanted to make it much smaller, but the regulation, the zoning bylaws, is it has to be a minimum of 50 acres, and that's why it's as large as it is.
Okay, thank you. Any, any question or comment back there, Mary Lou?
I was just wondering if Mr. Ford could tell me if he's aware of any long-term plans for the Sharmadon Park, for the south part of Sharmadon Park, the commercial part, the, the retained part.
Similar to what Laura Lee Spencer told you, I am not aware of any changes in the, in the current plans.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming online with us there, Mr. Ford, to clarify a couple things.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Mary Lou?
No, not at the minute. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Supervisor Hewitt, is there any other members of the public that wish to speak that you could see in the chat?
I am not seeing, sorry, I just had one message come in from Margaret again. What bylaws as not for residential question?
Pardon me?
The message states, what bylaw as not for residential?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not clear on the question. What bylaw would restrict the residential component on the property?
If, if I may, Margaret would like to be unmuted again, if I can at your request here.
Go ahead, yeah, please.
Sorry, and this was from Margaret, not Mary Lou.
Do you have her muted, or want me to take another question while you're working on it? Because I see Counselor Hamilton's hands up, as well as Mayor Robinson.
Yes, I have Margaret unmuted.
Good afternoon again. I just wanted to make one comment and follow up with Mary Lou. There are actually two diagrams that have been provided for this severance, and the one diagram does not show very clearly of that wooded area that Mary Lou is talking about. And the residential portion is very much on the east side of that severance. But my one question was, if there was a bylaw, I believe it was mentioned by Mr. Ford, that, that they would have made that smaller, but there was a bylaw that it needed to be a minimum of 50 acres? I don't think that there is, if it was residential, does it need to be 50 acres if it was residential? And what that bylaw is?
If I may, Mr. Chair, at this moment in time, there, there isn't a bylaw in effect. It's the official plan policies. And because this property is designated as rural, the minimum lot size is 20 hectares. So that is correct. If someone wanted to change the lot size to something smaller, they would have to go through an official plan amendment process. So I understand where Mr. Ford is coming from with respect to keeping the minimum lot sizes as required by the municipality, or sorry, by the county's official plan.
But if it was going to be severed, to be residential, then is it able to be severed? So is that, would that 50 acres then be able to be severed into smaller parcels?
If I may, Mr. Chair, the severance density is based on original farm parcels, and it's, in essence, in rural lands, whether you owned the originally surveyed parcel or not, there is a maximum of three severances that can be permitted in the rural area. So potentially, if there was sufficient frontage in area, the parcel could be severed. However, in this case, there isn't sufficient frontage in area for this parcel to be further subdivided.
Okay, okay.
Anything further?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go to, Mary Lou, are you still on the line? Okay, we'll go to Mayor Robinson, and then I'm gonna go to Counselor Hamilton. Go ahead, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you too, Planner Spencer. Planner Spencer, do you have the ability to put the mapping on screen for the benefit of committee of adjustment? But also those citizens that are participating online, certainly wouldn't help those that are, are participating through the phone. But I would like that opportunity, if the, the mapping could be put on screen, please.
After you, Mr. Chair. We do have that capability. It would just take us a couple of minutes to get that unloaded, unloaded onto the screen so everyone can see that.
Okay, thank you. Could I take Counselor Hamilton's question, and then we can, while we're working on that? Counselor Hamilton?
Well, thank you. Just a quick question or clarification for our planner. So I heard some concern about, with this open up, further opportunity for development of the campground, concern for the trees. I think I'm hearing from you, Planner Spencer, that, you know, can't just add extra campsites, and we can't cut down trees, that kind of thing. Those things are protected under, under the bylaws and the zoning that's in place. Is, is that correct?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you. Sorry, we were just trying to upload the diagram. My apologies. May I have the question again, please?
Oh, certainly. So just seeking clarification, because I heard concern about, about the hazard lands or the trees, I would think, and also concern about what development this might open up on the campground. But I think what I heard from you, Planner Spencer, was that trees and hazard lands are already protected. Further development at the campground would have to go through a planning process. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. There is a significant amount of lands on the property. There are natural environment lands that can't be further developed without review by Sogin Valley Conservation Authority and certainly permission from them at any point in time.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Hewitt, any success with the mapping? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. My microphone's still open.
Yeah, I was watching, yeah.
Can you hear me, Planner Spencer? Is this a good time?
I can, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, one last question. If this, the, the home, that area, if it were to be rezoned residential, are there any concerns about its proximity then to the campgrounds? Is there enough buffer, enough room between the two?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There would be a requirement for review as part of a zoning bylaw amendment to ensure that if a site plan agreement may even need to be put into effect to ensure there's a sufficient buffer between the two properties once they become separated. But that would be a third process that can't be addressed as part of the consent application at this time.
Okay, a third process. Could you just lay out the process then? So today it's talking about severance. There could be a, a request for zoning, and then the third part would be a site plan? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Counselor Hamilton?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see the map is up in front of us. Is there any questions on this before we get the, the motion read? Supervisor Hewitt, do you see any comments or?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I am seeing comments from the phone number last week, it's 777. This phone number has made comment previous. However, I can't remember who it is up and.
I believe 777 was Margaret Kreller, I believe. If you could unmute, then we'll get to. I will be looking to get the motion read in after this. Go ahead, we've got, is it Margaret?
Yeah, it's Mary Lou.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. And when you look at the map, it does show that the, like, it is a larger map of the, of the entire 150, 100-acre property. And it does show that it's at the front. And I, I think personally that, that maybe there's some chance that the applicant could, could reduce the size of his residential lot. I know that it says it's a minimum of 50 acres. I know that it says it's a minimum of 50 acres. But in our area, there are a lot of smaller properties that are much smaller than that. So it's not like it can't be done.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, if the applicant shows to make that parcel smaller, they would need to go through a process because they don't meet the minimum lot size. That would require an official plan amendment. That would need to be moved in before provisional consent is provided.
Right, but that is a process, that is an option that would be available.
They can go through the official plan amendment process if they so wish. It's not going to meet the policies. So I can't guarantee that the county is going to be supportive of reducing that lot size on that basis.
But when you look at the size and the regularity of it, and the fact that the applicant did not want to have it that big in the first place, do you not think that that is a possibility? Would that not be a possibility then?
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant can apply for any so they desire. Again, I'm just stating the obvious that there may not be support for the reduction of that lot size at the county level.
Thank you. Anything further, Mary Lou?
Oh, that's it at the minute, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you, one and all, for participating. That was awesome conversation. Yes, I'm going to, if I could get Planner Spencer to please read the motion for 2020, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next step would be for approval from the Committee of Adjustment to provide for provisional consent for files B052020 and B062020. Both applications will have separate resolutions with respect to them. So the motion is for file B052020 located at 231764 concession 2 WGR, which is known as concession 3 Lot 47 West and part of Lot 48 in geographic township of Normanby for Shamadon Resort Limited. Planning staff have recommended that this application be approved with the condition of the payment of part lot, parkland dedication. File number B062020, again, located at 231764 concession 2 WGR, concession 3 Lot 47 West, part lot 48 in the geographic township of Normanby. Again, the applicant being Shamadon Resort Limited. Planning staff have recommended that this application also be approved with the condition for the payment of the parkland dedication fee.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarification, we're going to be voting on 052020 first, and then we're going to follow through with 0620. So at this time, I'd be looking for a mover to move 052020. Counselor Hutchinson, are you moving that motion?
Counsel Hutchinson, yes, I moved the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second or? For this motion? Supervisor Hill, do you see? Counselor Shay, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Shay, I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the committee on this motion before we call? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, and I'm just seeking clarification, we're just getting a little turned around here. The application that has the house on it, is that the application you're speaking of right now? I apologize, just got a little turned around there.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, the first application being B052020 effectively creates the lot creation with the residential component. And then B06, that separate file relates to the right-of-way access for the separation of the two properties.
They're very good. Thank you for that clarification. So Planner Spencer, I would like to move an amendment to this motion to include the rezoning residential component, in whichever words you suggest Planner Spencer, what those words would be, but I would move that, please.
Planner Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, simply, the resolution would be revised to state that another condition of provisional consent for both files B052020 and B062020 add the provision and payment of the zoning bylaw amendment application fee to the municipality in addition to the passage of a zoning bylaw amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I believe I have to go to Counselor Hutchinson and Counselor Shay, because they had moved it and seconded, if that's okay with them. Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor, if you could answer that one, please?
Yes, Counsel Hutchinson, yes, I'm okay with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, I'm okay with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Robinson, did you have anything to comment or? Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other comments or questions from the committee on the motion that's before us? Counselor Hergert?
Yes, thank you. So this is not a direct neighbor's line or anything like that. But I do know that this is a gravel road that has a tremendous amount of traffic every single day of the week. And I am concerned that as we add more residential lots, that these roads will have to be improved. I'm curious, what would be a next step out of staff to note how many cars and how the road is improved or needs to be improved more to accommodate the amount of traffic and the size of the traffic? These are trailers along with their pulling units that are quite long. And like I mentioned, this is every single day. This isn't limited to Thursday afternoon and everybody goes home Tuesday morning. This is constant. So I'm curious about the number of vehicles that go down that road. And I'm also curious what our staff, if anything, needs to be done or how we will address it. This just adds to, it compounds the problem, because now we're adding another residential lot there. So I will be supportive of this in general, because of the amount of traffic on a gravel road that sees tremendous traffic from big units. But I do want to know from staff how that road is and if it meets the standard, really.
Yep, okay, thank you. Planner Spencer, do you have a quick response? We have a motion on the floor, too, that I'd like to call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to the question at hand, Counselor Hergert, it's outside of the scope of this application for consent. That's not to say, what we understand with this consent application is that there are existing dwelling units on the property, and those number of dwelling units are limited to what is on the property at this moment in time. Additional dwelling units would not be permitted.
So possibly not additional dwelling units. But if we talk about an accessory unit that could very easily fall within residential, there could be a secondary dwelling or unit within the house or within an accessory building. So by severing these, we really are opening up the potential for more families, more bodies, more people to use that road. Anyway, I can take the hint that it's not the time or place to talk about this. But I do actually share that there are concerns about how much traffic is on these gravel roads and the day or night, or all days and all nights. And here we are as a committee, being asked to open that up for more. So I'll reserve any further comment. But I do want all of my council, and actually, at least this committee, to be aware of the amount of traffic that is on that road.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hergert. Would anybody like to, for clarity, would like the motion read again? I know I have it moved by Counselor Hutchinson and seconded by Counselor Shay, or are we all good with that? Give me a thumbs up, then we can call the motion. Okay, let's call the vote then. All those in favor signify with a check mark, those opposed with an X. Thank you. Okay, as Chair, I, Tom Hutchinson, I'm in favor of this motion. Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting, please. Counselor Shay, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Shay, yes.
You, Mayor Robinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Thank you. Motion is carried. If you could please clear your dashboards. Thank you. Now, we're going to follow rate up with 062020. Get Planner Spencer to read that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The recommendation is that the Committee of Adjustment hereby approve consent application number B062020 with conditions as set out in the decision sheet.
Okay, thank you. I'll be looking for a mover on 062020, please. I believe we've had a wholesome discussion in 052020 on this one. Counselor Shay, did you, are you moving that motion?
Counselor Shay, I'll move the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson, I believe you were up next. Are you seconding this motion?
Counsel Hutchinson seconds the motion.
Thank you. So any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're called to vote. Raise your hand if you're in favor of this motion, or signify with an X if you're opposed. All right, I'll start as Chair. I, Tom Hutchinson, I'm in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
You, Mayor Robinson, please state your name and how you're voting.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Hergert, please state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hergert, no.
So the motion has carried. If I could, everyone to please clear their dashboards. We're going to move on to item number nine. 2020, Planner Spencer, if I could get you to read that, please.
This public meeting was called under section 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended with respect to an application for consent, file number B072020 affecting those lands owned by Mr. Neil Ward described as being 031154, side road 5, part lot 5, concession 5, in the geographic township of Normanby. The notice of this public meeting was mailed by standard class mail on the 19th of August 2020 to the property owner and 12 property owners within 120 meters of the subject property, in addition to all agencies and persons identified in the Planning Act. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the municipality of West Gray before the consent is passed, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the municipality of West Gray to the local planning appeals tribunal. Any person attending today's meeting for this application should provide their full name and address to the municipality. It is important to note that if you wish to be mailed a notice of the notice of decision and you do not live within 120 meters of the subject property, you must provide your number, your request in writing to the planning department. The information provided in terms of name and address will not represent your written request. The purpose of this application is the application for consent to sever surplus farm dwelling. The balance of the lands are intended to be added to the adjacent parcel under the farmer's ownership immediately west of the subject lands, being 101162, concession 5. The severed surplus farm dwelling will have access on side road 5. This is an application with respect to surplus farm dwellings, which requires certain criteria from the county of Gray in order to be considered to have a farm with surplus dwelling. The applicant has provided the necessary information, including proof of ownership of adjacent farmlands in the area and adjacent farmlands directly adjacent to the property. In addition, the applicant has also provided their farm registration number, verifying that they are in fact a bona fide farmer. Recommendation from staff is that application B072020 be approved with the payment of the zoning bylaw amendment fee to the municipality of West Gray for this severed parcel, the passage of a zoning bylaw amendment, and the payment of a parkland dedication fee. Comments have been provided from the County of Gray Planning and Development Department in addition to the Sogging Valley Conservation Authority, both of which are in support of the application. Nothing further.
Thank you, Planner Spencer. Is there any questions or comments from the committee members on this? So just raise your hand, please. Supervisor Hill, do you see anybody over there? Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, we're going to go to the public and we're going to be looking for anybody that wants to speak in favor of this. And when we're done this question period, we're going to speak to anybody that's opposed to it so we can keep the flow going here. So Supervisor Hill, have you received or any indication? Or do you have anyone on the screen that would like to discuss this?
Similar to before, any members of the public wishing to speak in favor can do so by raising their hand, either by clicking the raise their hand function or pressing star nine on the phone. Alternatively, they can send a chat message to myself. At this time, I have not received any comment.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hill. I do not see anyone on my screen. So we'll move forward now. And anybody in the audience or in the public that would like to speak in opposition or is opposed to this application, you can signify through Supervisor Hill at this time. Supervisor Hill, do you see anyone there?
At this time, I'm not seeing anybody wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you. All right, Planner Spencer? It's time we can take a motion on this.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for application B072020 affecting lands owned by Mr. Neil Ward described as 031154, side road 5, part lot 5, concession 5 in geographic township of Normanby. The recommendation is that the committee provide provisional consent for file B072020 with the following conditions: payment of the zoning bylaw amendment fee to the municipality of West Gray, the passage of a zoning bylaw amendment, and payment of the parkland dedication fee.
Thank you, Planner Spencer. Is there a mover for this motion, please? Counselor Hergert, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Thank you. I'd be looking for a second or please? Counselor Hamilton, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hamilton, yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions from the committee on this motion before we call it? Supervisor Hill, do you see any?
Do not see any.
Well, we're going to call the motion, though. So all those in favor signify with a check mark, those opposed with an X, please. And I will start. I, Tom Hutchinson, as Chair, I'm in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Robinson, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Counselor Hergert, yes.
Thank you. Clear your desk. Thank you. Clear your dashboards, please. I'm sorry, motion carried. And we're at the, uh, we're at the adjournment portion. It just goes up looking for the next meeting that is to be determined at this time, so you'll have to watch the website. There's not a date set for it yet, so I'd be looking for a mover to adjourn, please. Councillor Herger, are you moving that?
Councillor Herger, yes.
And Councillor Hutchinson, are you seconding that motion? Councillor Hutchinson?
Sorry. Yes, I'll second that, but I'd also like to ask for a recess break before we start the next meeting.
Yes, yeah, we'll just, we'll close this up, and then Mayor Robinson will take over. All right, so we have a motion for a moved and seconded, so all those in favor for adjournments signify with a check mark. Those opposed with an X. And I will go as Chair, Tom Hutchinson. I'm in favor of this motion. Councillor Herger, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Councillor Herger, yes.
You, Councillor Shea, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Councillor Shea, yes.
Mayor Robinson, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Mayor Christine Robinson, in favor.
You, Councillor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Councillor Hamilton, yes.
Thank you. And Councillor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting, please.
Councillor Hutchinson, in favor.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Motion's carried. I will hand the meeting over to Mayor Robinson.
Well, thank you, Chair Hutchinson. I very much appreciate you chairing the Committee of Adjustment meeting. We will have a committee of the whole planning meeting, but I will not call it to order until 20 after 3:00. So this will serve as a time to take a bit of a break before I call to order our committee of the whole planning meeting. Thank you very much, one and all. Hello, everyone. I am Mayor Christine Robinson, and I am calling the Committee of the Whole Planning Meeting for September 8th, 2020, to order. I do want to have some indication from our members of council that they are present. So, members of council sitting as committee, could you please present a check mark if you are present? I have Councillor Hamilton, Herger, Deputy Mayor Hutchinson. Let me just grant, uh, scroll through. Councillor Shea and Councillor Hutchinson, thank you very much. I also want to note for the record that Councillor Townsend is regrets for this meeting. We do have a quorum. We will proceed with our meeting. I do want to say right off the top that we are using audio only to conduct this electronic meeting. Video is not possible at this time due to limited bandwidth in some areas of West Gray. Bandwidth is challenging our ability to do a complete video broadcast. So for now, we'll be sharing today's agenda, as well as mapping in relation to the items for discussion, as well as some of our audio for the meeting. Okay, so the, that addresses item one. Item two, disclosures of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. Committee members, do you have any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Councillor Hamilton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Not in reference to pecuniary interest. I was wondering, Mayor Robinson, if you're able to turn your volume up. I, I can hear you, but you're, you sound far away. Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Thank you. I will get that addressed immediately. I am not that far away. I'm in West Gray.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hamilton, for identifying that my audio seemed far away. I wonder if I could just ask you again, how does the audio appear? We just did some adjustments through my computer, so thank you for the latitude of a bit of time for adjustment. I'm seeing that there are thumbs up, but Councillor Hamilton, how do I sound?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. You do sound quieter than my other colleagues, but I can hear you, so thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just speak up a bit further. All right, thank you for that. Okay, so before we go any further, I would like Cody Hewitt, Supervisor of Recreation, just to identify some of the highlights of this meeting before we go into item three to start this. So Supervisor Hewlett, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. If you get disconnected at any time during this meeting, you can dial 1-647-558-0588, and enter the meeting ID 85652154785. Both members of council and staff have been briefed on the various features of the Zoom meeting software, and will be using the raise their hand function to speak, and the green check mark to vote in favor of a motion, and the red X to vote against. Each member of council will then be called upon verbally to confirm their vote for the benefit of any guests who have joined us over the phone rather than the online software. If you have any technical issues for members of the public throughout the meeting, you can send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewitt, Recreation Supervisor, and I will attempt to assist you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hewlett. And because I did have a technical issue there for the moment, I'm just giving members of committee a second look at if there's anybody, anybody that has a disclosure of pecuniary interest on that, so just one more time for clarity. Seeing none, thank you. We are now moving on to item three. I'm going to read the title of this item, and then I am going to go to Madam Clerk for a motion. So this is in regards to Public Meeting Pursuant to the Planning Act, Section 34, Zoning Amendment Number ZA03/2020, Olsowski-Jedic 475274, Townsend Lake Road. Madam Clerk, could you please, please read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, your worship, the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole Planning hereby convenes in a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act, Section 34, for the purpose of zoning bylaw amendment number ZA032020, Olsowski-Jsec 44754274, Townsend Lake Road, at 3:33 PM.
I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for this motion, please. Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll move the motion.
Councillor Shea, are you seconding this motion?
Councillor Shea, I second the motion.
Any questions or comments from the committee? I'm just scrolling down to see. No? All right. So on the motion, all those in favor, please signify with a check mark. Those not in favor, please signify with a next mark. I will begin, and members of committee, as I call your name, please restate your name and also state how you're voting. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Councillor Herger. Councillor Herger, state your name and how you're voting.
Councillor Herger, yes.
Councillor Shea.
Councillor Shea, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Councillor Hamilton.
Councillor Hamilton, yes.
Councillor Hutchinson.
Councillor Hutchinson, sorry. I don't know what happened, but I missed that motion. Can I have the motion read again?
Yes, you certainly can have it read again. You're the only one left to vote. But Clerk Charbeck, could you please read the motion?
Yes, through you, your worship. The motion is just to convene the public meeting for this specific application. It reads that Committee of the Whole Planning hereby convenes in a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act, Section 34, for the purpose of zoning bylaw amendment number ZA032020, for Olsowski-Jsec 4475274, Townsend Lake Road, at 3:33 PM.
Councillor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Councillor Hutchinson, yes, I'm in favor now. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried.
So we are now dealing with the application before us under 3.1. Under 3.2, we will have a report from Planner Spencer. But at this time, I will have Clerk Charbeck read the motion. I'd be looking for a mover and a seconder, but please note, committee and those listening, for our listening audience, I will not be calling the vote till the whole process is undertaken for this public meeting. All right, Clerk Charbeck, please.
Through you, your worship, the recommendation is that the committee defer application said 032020 until further information is provided by the applicant to support the proposal.
Okay. Members of committee, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Councillor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Councillor Hutchinson, yes, I can move that motion.
Councillor Shea, are you second, Councillor Shea, are you seconding this motion?
Councillor Shea, I second the motion.
Thank you. I will be calling the vote later on. I'm now going to Planner Spencer for her report. Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is an executive summary of the report. This applicant has applied to amend the zoning on the subject lands permitted campground use. The subject lands have access on Townsend Lake Road. The recommendation by planning, including the county planner, is for deferral of the application until further information is provided by the applicant to support the proposal. The following information is required to proceed: A planning justification report, an engineering report to address servicing stormwater and surface drainage, a site plan to incorporate the recommendations of the engineering report, an environmental impact study if requested based on the findings of the above reports, and a traffic and/or acoustical assessment if deemed necessary based on the findings of the first three reports. I have nothing further.
Thank you. And then, anything further on written comments received?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So comments were provided by the County of Gray Planning and Development Department, Sogging Valley Conservation Authority, into comments provided by members of the public on behalf of a group. Those comments have all been received and provided to staff and relative members of the public in council. Thank you.
Well, thank you as well. We are now on 3.4, verbal comments. I'm first going to go to members of committee for questions. I will then go to the agent or applicant, and then I will go to citizens or anybody that is on the line that wishes to speak in favor. And then I will go to individuals that wish to speak in opposition to this application. So beginning with members of committee, members of committee, questions, please, starting with Councillor Hutchinson.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't really have my hand up at this time, but I would like to hear from the public, and then I may have some comment later on.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I saw an indication on the screen, but thank you for the clarity that there isn't anything further. Committee members, any questions at this time? I'm just scrolling down. I have a two-part screen, so please bear with me. I'm not seeing any council members sitting as committee that wish to ask questions at this time. The agent or applicant, would you like to address this committee? Supervisor Hewlett, do you have any indication that the applicant is Jsec, Olsowski? Excuse my pronunciation. Would that individual be present and wish to speak?
From the dashboard that I'm seeing, if I'm a Madam Mayor, they are wishing to speak. I believe I can unmute them at your request.
Yes, please, please do that. Hello and welcome. And I wonder if you could just state your name for the record and any comments you wish to make. And I would, I do apologize for the pronunciation of your name.
Not a problem. Uh, this is Barbara and Jack Olshewski.
Thank you. Please proceed.
This is the first time, we are new residents, and this is the first time that we are ever attending anything like that. So excuse us for not fully following the questions. And so what was the questions to answer?
So what I'm asking at this point is if, on behalf of the committee, is if you wish to state anything with regard to your application at this point.
Well, we have provided the, the application, the drawing. Just grab the application. So basically, we are asking for an amendment from A2 zoning into A2-419, as was said on our application, to allow us to have a small area dedicated to a campground of maximum five tents as part of the campground. And the trailer. Eight parking spaces, just, yeah, I'm reading, just not to, not to say something different. And limited operation of the campground from May to October. And the campground to, would have, would have service with private services, that meaning we would be providing the water and and electricity and, and what is it called?
Facilities.
Facilities. The water facilities, not the, not the city or county.
Thank you, Ms. Olshewski. Is there anything further?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. I am going to go to members of the public. Members of the public, those that are wishing to speak in favor. Now, this is in favor of the application, or if you wish to speak in favor of the deferral. That is your choice on, on what you wish to speak to. But are there members of the public that wish to speak in favor? Supervisor Hewlett, would you be able to assist me in terms of any citizens that wish to participate?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor, if I may. Any members of the public wishing to comment during this section of the meeting may do so by raising their hand. If you have joined us on a computer, you can raise your hand by pressing the raise your hand button in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. Or if you've joined us over the phone line, pressing star nine on your phone will raise your hand. Alternatively, you can also send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
Thank you for that, Supervisor Hewlett. Just giving a moment for anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this. All right, any individual that wishes to speak in opposition? Supervisor Hewlett, are you watching for the, I see an indication for Donna. I wonder if you could please unmute that individual?
Absolutely.
Hello, Donna. I apologize, I don't see your last name, but could you please state your name for the record and your comment accordingly? Hello, Donna. I apologize, I don't see your last name, but could you please state your name for the record and your comment accordingly?
Yes, my name is Donna Thompson. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. We moved to Glenelg Township and had our house built in 1987. We had the property divided in 1991. Our daughter and her husband had a house built on the lower lot, and we kept the two lots to the south of us, our house. I had a hairdressing business in Durham for 25 years. We have paid taxes on these lots for 29 years, thinking they would contribute to our retirement. Neither my husband or I have company pensions. We sold the lot in question last year, thinking that it was rural residential. Never in our wildest dreams thought we would be facing something like this. If this was passed, it would lower the value on the lot between him and us if we could sell it at all, also our house and surrounding properties. Aside from worrying about campfire.
I'm sorry, Donna, I did lose your audio. Could you please speak into the mic? Hopefully, we have not lost complete connection. Supervisor Hewlett, are you able to identify, is Donna still connected? Donna Thompson, thank you, Clerk Charbeck. Donna Thompson, are you still there?
If I may, Madam Mayor, from my end, we did have Donna Thompson connected until I started speaking. It appears as though her connection has dropped. If you would like, I can attempt to unmute her again.
Yes, please.
You have to be unmuted. I don't know how much they heard.
Donna Thompson, are you there?
Yes, I am. Did you hear? Did you hear what I said?
Not at all. I wonder if you could just restart, please. You didn't get too far into your discussion before the audio was dropped.
Okay, okay. I'll start over.
Yep.
My name, my name is Donna Thompson. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we moved to Glenelg Township and had a house built in 1987. We had the property divided in 1991. Our daughter and her family had a house built on the lower lot, and we kept the two lots to the south of our house. I had a hairdressing business in Durham for 25 years. We have paid taxes on these lots for 29 years, thinking they would contribute to our retirement. Neither my husband nor I have a company pension. We sold the lot in question last year, thinking that it was rural residential. It was never rural residential. Never in our wildest dreams thought we would be facing something like this. If this was passed, it would lower the value on the lot between him and us if we could sell it at all, also our house and surrounding properties. Aside from worrying about campfires, noise, and et cetera, that have also been stated by many of our neighbors. For these reasons, we strongly oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, and your comments have been so noted. Supervisor Hewlett, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this application?
At this time, I am not seeing any members of the public who would like to speak.
Okay. I thought Heidi was going to talk.
So I'm not seeing anybody else on my screen as well. So with that, I am going to go to the, because we've satisfied this public hearing in terms of the items on the agenda.
If I may, sorry to interject, Madam Mayor, we did just receive notice of somebody who would like to comment.
And thank you for interjecting, Supervisor Hewlett, and that is absolutely fine. Could that individual please state, could you please state your name and your comment, please? Please go ahead, state your name and your comment.
Yeah, my name's Phil Bishop.
Hello, Phil, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm concerned about a non-administrated campground. And it's not supervised properly. I'm just very nervous. I don't do much talking on the phone that way.
Fair enough. Is that your comment, Mr. Bishop?
Well, we don't want, and we don't, and there's no services there now. There's only electrical. Temporary service, as a matter of fact, and there's no well, no septic. So it would need an engineered septic bed as well. And we're also dealing with other bylaw infractions right now with a shipping container on the lot. So he's not prepared to follow these bylaws. So we're concerned, when he gets, how is he going to handle a campground and follow all the rules of the Ontario government and all that stuff?
Well, thank you, Mr. Bishop. Your comments are received to the record.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Supervisor Hewlett, before I go to Clerk Charbeck to read the motion again, I just want to double check if there's anybody else that wishes to comment.
And my apologies for interjecting earlier. At this time, I do not see anybody.
Thank you, and no need to apologize for interjecting. We definitely need to ensure that individuals have their opportunity to speak. All right, so at this point, I would request our clerk to reread the motion that was moved by Councillor Hutchinson and seconded by Councillor Shea.
Thank you. Through your worship, the recommendation is that the Committee of the Hall recommend to council to defer the application said 032020 until further information is provided by the applicant to support the proposal.
Members of committee, are there any questions on the motion? Councillor Shea.
I thought the Olshewskis were indicating desire to speak. They have a check mark?
Okay. I can address that at this point, then. Mrs. Ochevsky, do you have another comment, or did you just not remove your check mark?
I would like to add a few points. This is not the commercial campground, and it never was our intention to do commercial campground. It's just for now. It's just two tents and a trailer, which will be acting as a storage and small office. It's just a small part of the property, really small. It's just the southeast corner, just in the trees. There will be sanitary. There will be washroom. It's gonna be class one, which is allowed by law. Water will be tracked, and drinking water will be provided. As I said, this is just the two tents, and it's not in commercial. There is no worries about the traffic and any such things. And I think it's gonna enhance the value of the property. So, I mean, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
And Barbara here, if you allow me, and thank you for inviting us and having to hear the comments from the neighbors. It's, we do appreciate that as well, and give us more clarity and ensuring that we will, if we are allowed to build this campground, that we will make sure that we follow the all regulations and we are not impacting neighbors if it happens ever that it's too loud and brings problems to anyone, including us, because we are also, we're living in that property as well. We will do our best to be the civil neighbors as we would like to be. And for now, we're asking for this amendment for up to, up to eight, up to five tents. But really, it doesn't need to go that far.
It's just two.
It's just two for now, and we're just starting. This is just, we don't live there yet, but.
The house is in plan. It's actually, we're gonna apply this year, but because of COVID, everything's delayed. But next year, we're starting building a house as well.
And this is also our retirement plan. So we didn't think that it would impact negatively the value of other properties. We don't impose or assume any additional big traffic. It's, and we would be screening the people who will be, who would like to have a camp on the site. I'm not trying to answer all the questions and concerns, definitely, but this allows me to hear it as much as I can at the moment. We don't have all the plans finalized yet, but we definitely taking into consideration all those voices.
Just, Jaco Shaski, just one more thing. As I understand the rural bylaw on this property allows to build five units townhouses or bed and breakfast with five units, which will be probably more impacted on neighbors if, you know, goes through. But it's not our intention. It's just the two tents, really small campground.
Right, maybe we need to think about it and move into a different direction, like bed and breakfast instead of the campground.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, awesome. That's all we have to say. Thank you very much.
Welcome. No, appreciate. It was highlighted that you had additional questions. But before, I do see there are, well, it looks like the same numbers coming up twice. Before I go to that individual supervisor Hewlett, I just want our planner, Planner Spencer, to clarify that there's not a bylaw attached to this. Could you apply, can you provide some clarity for this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The property is zoned as A2, and those uses within the A2 zone are permitted. This is intended to be a rural property. It's not intended to have townhouse dwelling units on the property. It's not intended for anything other than a small bed and breakfast use within the single detached dwelling unit once constructed on the property. It's not intended for a more commercial operation or five units at once. That's not permitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. and Mrs. Olshewski, thank you very much for comments. They will be so noted. Your additional comments as well will be noted in the record. Now Supervisor Hewlett, I do see a number that ends with five, six, seven twice. I wonder if you could just unmute that individual so that they have the opportunity. I'm going to give that latitude, because although I did call for the public and was moving on to the motion, I want to make sure that everybody that has an opportunity to speak, that that's very clear that they can speak. So could you unmute that individual?
Yes, I can. And I would assume that it may be two separate numbers that just happened to end in my last three digits. So I would say that we should try with both numbers.
Sure, and that's why you're doing that technical part. Thank you. Hello, I wonder if you could state your name and what you wish to say to the committee?
Yeah, this is Heidi Hart.
Yes, please proceed, Heidi.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused about the conversation from the applicant, because my understanding according to the application, that it's for a private campground and that it's for five tents and a minimum of eight parking spaces. And it's not clear from the limited diagram that was submitted that it's just a portion. And the portion that is drawn, I'm wondering about setbacks and the requirements with respect to the property. And he's referring to a trailer, which isn't included on the diagram. So I'm really confused about what's going on. Right now, there's a shipping container on the vacant land that has some construction going around it, but that's all that I'm aware of. And so I'm confused about what they're trying to clarify, saying it's only one or two tents, and what it is that the committee is considering at this point.
Okay, Heidi Hart, thank you very much for those comments seeking clarity. I'm going to go to Planner Spencer to provide that clarity based on the application as it stands right now. And any additional information you have, please. Could you please hang on a moment? Your mic is open. I'd like Planner Spencer to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The application is at hand, and it's discussing not the construction of a detached dwelling unit. Obviously, there's a storage office building that's proposed. The location of the trailer, you are correct, Ms. Hart, it is not included on the application. It's the first I've heard about the use of a trailer on the site. That's why we've asked for the application to be deferred, so that we can have more information provided with respect to the ability for the site to have services that serve both, you know, water and sewer on the site from a private perspective, in addition to the impact of any expansion that may occur if these tent platforms went beyond the five shown on the drawing at this point in time. That's all the clarity that we have, and that's why the recommendation is to defer the application.
Thank you. Heidi Hart, anything further?
And so I'm, sorry, am I on?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I guess I'm wondering then what the process is, because it seems that the recommendation from the committee, or from the planner for the committee to consider, is that there are a number of conditions to be met. And so if those conditions are met in terms of the engineering and the environmental and all of the one through five and one through six, I think it is, are we then back to this stage again? I'm just wondering for the area residents who have concerns with respect to any further decisions.
Planner Spencer, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You are correct, Ms. Hart. They need to satisfy those conditions to our satisfaction prior to this file coming before council. It would need to go through another committee public meeting based on the information that may or may not be provided by the applicant. So we aren't giving any consideration or proposing for the consideration to be given to the file at this time until that additional information that has been recommended is received.
Ms. Hart, anything further?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. That's helpful.
Absolutely. Now Supervisor Hewlett, you identified that there may be another caller with the same last three digits of the phone number. Could you please qualify that for me?
It appears as though that number has left the meeting now, so.
Okay, so one last round. I do see a hand at five, six, seven there. Wonder if you could unmute that?
I believe they're back, so.
Hello, could you please state your name and your comments, please?
Yes, Phil Bishop again. It was Heidi, you were trying to get a hold of Heidi's phone, but she spoke on mine.
Okay, we did have Heidi Hart speak.
Yes, I know we did.
Before, is there anything further, Mr. Bishop?
The only concern is the shipping container that's on the property. It seems to be, they're running power to it, and it is on occupied land. And there's not supposed to be power to a shipping container.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
And it has materials in it as well.
Okay, so that particular piece of information is not germane to this application, but that does follow, if anything, can be held through bylaw enforcement. And that is the process by which that particular activity needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Purposes, not for this application, but thank you for so noting it anyway, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hewlett, please. Supervisor Hewlett, please do another scan. I, I think it's really important to see if there's any additional people that wish to speak, and then I will go to Clerk Sherbeck, who I know is just waiting to read this motion again. Supervisor Hewlett, anybody further?
At this time, I have not seen any members of the public.
Okay, so that's given a lot of time for citizens, and I wanted to demonstrate that as well. Clerk Sherbeck, we have a motion before us, please take it away at this point.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The recommendation moved by Counsel Hutchinson, seconded by Counsel Shay, is that the Committee of the Hall recommend to Council to defer application said 03/2020 until further information is provided by the applicant to support the proposal.
Questions on the motions, committee? Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes, Counsel Hutchinson, here. Yeah, there, there is a real concern from the community members regarding this, this campgrounds. It is in a particular farming area, which, which I sort of questioned myself. I'm sure there are probably lots better places to set up a campground, but I'm not so sure whether it's even feasible, given it's a five acre property or less than five acres. So, I think when the applicants get into the, looking at all the conditions that they need to meet to set up a campground, they might find it that it's not realistic. So anyways, we'll wait and see what comes out of that before we make any final decisions, but, because there are, there's quite a few steps that they need to take to even go there. So, we'll, we'll wait on that. It's unfortunate if this property was a few miles to the south, it would have been near Townsend Lake, and it would have made a lot more sense, I think. But anyways, we'll, we'll wait and see, and, and I'm in favor of deferring this until we have lots more information.
Thank you for your comments, I'm just looking to see if any other member of council sitting in this committee wishes to say anything. I've done my scan, I don't see anybody. So I am calling the vote. All those in favor, please signify with a checkmark. Those opposed, please signify with the next mark. So, members of committee, when I call your name, I would like you to restate your name and state how you are voting. I will begin with myself. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of the motion before us. Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. We are now on 3.5. This is to close this particular public meeting. Clerk Sherbeck, could you please read the recommendation?
Through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that this public meeting closes at 4:08 PM.
Is there a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll move the motion.
Counselor Herger, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Questions or comments from committee? All those in favor, please signify with a checkmark. Those not in favor, please signify with a next mark. As I call your name, members of committee, please state your name and how you're voting. I'll begin with myself. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson?
Counsel Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, please clear your dashboard. All right, we are now on item four. Public meeting pursuant to Planning Act Section 34, zoning amendment number ZA07-2020, Hopkins Wyatt in bracket Sean, 284529, Southgate Glenelg Town Line. All right, so Clerk Sherbeck, could you please read the motion?
Yes, through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that Committee of the Hall planning hereby convenes in a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act Section 34, for the purpose of zoning bylaw amendment number ZA07/2020, for Hopkins Wyatt, for 284529, South Gate Glenelg Town Line, at 4:10 PM.
Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Herger, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson, second the motion.
Questions? All those in favor, please signify with a checkmark. Those not in favor, please signify with the next mark. Members of council, as I call your name, I would ask that you restate your name, and then how you are going to vote. But I do see, before I go any further, Counselor Hutchinson, you have your hand up.
Yes, you went through that very quickly, did you ask for questions?
We're not, the, yes, I did, and this is just on opening the public meeting. It's not, we haven't got to the, the essence, if you will, of this particular item.
All right, thanks, sorry, I thought you were asking for questions.
At any time, if members of committee have questions, absolutely. Okay. All right, so we have a mover and seconder, it's been read, I'm calling the vote then. Also, just by way of a recap, when I call your name, please restate your name and how you are voting. Beginning with myself, Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. And I'll go to Counselor Hutchinson.
Counsel Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Motion does carry. Thank you, please clear your dashboard. We are now dealing with the application before us, and I will have Clerk Sherbeck read the motion. I'll be looking for a mover and seconder. We will not vote on it till after the entire public meeting process has taken place. So Clerk Sherbeck, please.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that committee approve file ZA07/2020 and forward the appropriate bylaw to council for first, second, and third readings.
Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Herger, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Is there a seconder for this motion? Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson, second the motion.
Thank you. Now we will go to Planner Spencer for her presentation, and follow on with any written comments received. Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This file is related to a condition for provisional consent for ZA07/2020, the related file being B17/2019, which Committee of Adjustment heard and approved through provisional consent last December. The applicant's agent has applied for the required zoning amendment to satisfy this condition imposed by the committee, and the purpose of the amendment is to rezone a portion of the subject lands to recognize the deficient lot area and frontage of a newly created parcel, the effect of which will rezone the lands from Rural A2 and Natural Environment 2 and E2 to Rural A2 with exception 420, Natural Environment 2 and E2, and Rural A2. Exception 420 will recognize the deficient lot frontage and area of the subject lands being the newly created parcel. The subject lands include, including the newly created parcel, will have access from the Southgate Glenelg Town Line. Comments were received from the County of Gray and the Sogeen Valley Conservation Authority, who both request notice of decision, favorable comments, and the recommendation is to approve the application to committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're at the point under 4.4, verbal comments. Looking to committee if there are any comments. Members of committees, questions or comments? All right, I've just scanned both screens. I'm now going to open it up to the agent or applicant. And if Wyatt, Sean Hopkins, or the agent is on the line that wishes to speak, I'm inviting you to do so now. Supervisor Hewlett, would you be able to assist me on that if Mr. Hopkins is available on, or, or call in or online, please?
Yes, absolutely, and if the agent or applicant wishes to speak, I would suggest that they use the raise their hand function, either right-clicking the raise their hand, okay, in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen, or pressing star nine over the phone.
Okay, I'm not seeing the agent or applicant at this point.
Nor am I.
Okay, thank you for reconfirming that. I'm opening it up to members of the public, those individuals online who would like to speak in favor of this application. Please give an indication, and Supervisor Hewlett will invite you to speak, and also unmute you.
Again, similar to as we have done in times before, if you wish to speak during this time, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise your hand function, or pressing star nine on the phone, or sending a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
All right, as Supervisor Hewlett is awaiting anybody that wishes to speak, this will be in favor of the application. Following any comments in favor, I'll be asking for individuals that wish to speak in opposition to this application. Supervisor Hewlett, anybody at this point?
At this time, I'm not seeing any members of the public wishing to speak in favor.
All right, I will now go to individuals that are on the line, members of the public. If you wish to speak in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your hand, or any other function that you could do if they are phoning in as well, through the star function.
Yes, absolutely. At this time, I'm not seeing any members wishing to speak in opposition either.
Okay, I'm just giving it one moment, because like the last application, we did have a rush of comments right at the end before the vote. Seeing none, I will now ask Clerk Sherbeck to reread the motion.
Worship, the motion recommendation moved by Herger, Counsel Herger, and seconded by Counsel Hutchinson, is that committee approve file ZA07/2020 and forward the appropriate bylaw to council for first, second, and third readings.
Thank you for that. Questions or comments from committee? Seeing none? As I call your name, members of committee, please restate your name and how you are voting. I will begin, Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of the motion. Counselor Herger, please state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. Now, members of committee, I will need a motion to close this particular public meeting. Clerk Sherbeck, could you please read the motion?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that this public meeting closes at 4:19 PM.
Thank you. Is there a mover for this motion? Counselor Herger, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify with a checkmark. Those not in favor, please signify with the next mark. Members of committee, as I call your name, please restate your name, and also identify how you are voting. I will begin, Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Herger, state your name and how you are voting.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. So this particular public hearing is now closed. That motion did carry, we are now moving on to item five. This is a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act Section 34, Planning Amendment Number ZA08/2020, Scriven, Leia, 182228. Concession 12. Clerk Sherbeck, please.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. We have a recommendation that Committee of the Hall planning hereby convenes in a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act Section 34, for the purpose of zoning bylaw amendment number ZA08/2020, Scriven, for 182228, concession 12, at 4:21 PM.
I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Herger, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Is there a seconder for this motion? Counselor Shay, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Shay, I second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Shay, you have your checkmark, I'm just, I, questions or comments are a raise of hand. Oh, thank you for removing your checkmark. All those in favor, please indicate with a checkmark. Those not in favor, please indicate with the next mark. And, as usual, when I call your name, please restate your name and also how you are voting. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson?
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay?
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Herger?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Motion carried. So now we're dealing with 5.1 and 5.2, so we do have a, Planner Spencer will be dealing with the report, but prior to that, Clerk Sherbeck, please.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The recommendation is that committee approve file ZA08/2020 and forward the appropriate bylaw to council for first, second, and third readings.
Is there a mover and a seconder for this motion? Counselor Herger, are you moving this motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Is there a seconder for this motion? Counselor Shay, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Shay, I second the motion.
Thank you. Now please keep in mind, I'm not calling the vote. We need to go through the whole planning, public hearing process on this agenda. So later on, we will be, I will be calling the vote. So at this point, Planner Spencer, please take us through the application.
Thank you. This application is for file ZA08/2020 for Leah Scriven.
The applicant's agent has applied for a zoning bylaw amendment to permit the construction of a second dwelling unit on the subject lands. The second dwelling unit is intended to be constructed as a detached dwelling unit. The subject lands have frontage on concession 12, and based on the information provided by the applicant's agent, a second entrance has been proposed from concession 12 for the new dwelling unit. Comments were received from the County of Gray Planning Department this morning, so I apologize that they're not within your package. But county planning staff, provided positive comments are received from the Conservation Authority, have no objection to the application and request further notice. Conservation Authority has provided favorable comments and have no concerns, and also requests notice of the application. Thank you.
Okay, so that took us through the presentation and the written comments. We're now on 5.4, which is the verbal comments. First of all, committee members, any questions or comments? Committee members, anything at this point? I'm looking at my screens. Counselor Herger, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a question about how far away the buildings are from one another, and I just was curious if they were going to be using the cluster for the septic and the well.
Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. In order to accommodate the new dwelling unit on the property, new services will be provided to the site under the building code. At this point, the cluster, I'm just trying to find a dimension here for you.
Take your time, please.
It's in at around 100 feet between the two proposed homes, just on the rough sketch that we have at this moment in time.
Okay, so my question to that is, is that consistent to, I believe I read in the county, but asked for this as long as we were, as long as they were able to use the cluster? And so to me, the cluster is to use the same services. Is there any concern with using separate services?
Planner Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, provided services can be utilized to share services should they wish to do so. I don't believe 100 feet will be sufficient for the ability for private services for septic to operate correctly, nor do we have information to determine that that has the capacity to support a second dwelling unit on the property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Members of committee, are there any other questions? Jermaine, to this application. Seeing none, I'm going to go to the agent or applicant. So would Leah Scriven be available? Supervisor Hewlett.
I do see a member in the meeting with the same last name. I'm not sure if there is a relation. If you would like to speak, either the agent or applicant, I would encourage you to use the raise your hand function, either by clicking the raise your hand or pressing star nine over the phone, if you would like to speak.
Oh, very good. We have, well, we have a Bob Scriven, so let's unmute, please. Thank you, Supervisor Hewlett. Hello, you're listed anyway as a Bob Scriven. Please state your name and your comments, please.
If you can hear us right now, you may be receiving a prompt. The host would like to unmute you if you would just like to click yes or unmute.
Okay, third time a charm. Can you hear me now, committee? It's Bob Scriven speaking.
Bob, loud and clear, please.
Okay, thank you so much. Leah is my spouse, and in terms of, if I may, just address the comments made by Counselor Herger with regard to shared services.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Through you, your worship, there is a new, relatively new well. I think it's about two or three years old on the existing, for the existing house. My plumber has confirmed that it is of sufficient quality and capacity to service the proposed second dwelling. So our plan is to simply do a service from that particular well and not drill another well. With regard to the septic, yes, we will have to install a new septic, which is part of our application because with regard to the existing septic for the existing home, it's of unknown vintage, so to speak. So I don't want to tap into that and just have problems down the line. And one minor correction to what Planner Spencer indicated with regard to the second entrance, there is already a second entrance. It may be informal or not recognized, but there's at least, there's at least already a second entrance onto concession 12 for this proposed dwelling. So whether I need to finalize that or formalize that to have a separate permit, at least there's a call written, a driveway, and an approach already on the property. So it really, it really is a good building site and a good location for this proposed dwelling for my father-in-law, who's ultimately going to be the occupant of this, of this second dwelling unit.
Okay, anything further, Mr. Scriven?
No, I just sincerely appreciate the consideration of the committee, particularly after quite a long, quite a long meeting and afternoon. I just appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Oh, thank you very much for that. Planner Spencer, would you be able to provide comment on the questions and the comments from Bill Scriven? Oh, sorry, Bob Scriven.
Don't make that mistake. I'm joking, sorry. Sometimes sarcasm doesn't come through on a teleconference.
Fair enough. Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so the application that's submitted will require a formal entrance application. It's a, it's right now, it's a farm entrance, so it will need to be formalized in that sense. But I do see the, I now understand your proposal with the septic bed and the location of the existing well that can service it, so that I have no concerns. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Again, Bob Scriven, anything in addition to after hearing what our planner had to say?
No, nothing at all. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. Very, very much appreciated. So Supervisor Hewlett, I'm now going to go to members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this application. So could you provide assistance? This is for anyone that wishes to participate but speak in favor of the application at this time.
Yes, thank you. Similar to as we have done a few times so far, if you would like to speak in favor of this application, you can do so by raising your hand, either pressing star nine over the phone, or if you have joined us using the internet, you can click the raise your hand function. Alternatively, you can send a chat message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
And are you seeing anyone?
At this time, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application. Supervisor Hewlett, guide us through that.
The same process as we just went through. You can either raise your hand or send a chat message to myself. Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor.
Are you seeing anyone?
At this time, I'm not seeing any members of the public wishing to comment.
Okay, so now I will go to our clerk, Clerk Sherbeck. If you could please reread the motion before us on this particular public meeting application.
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. The recommendation moved by Counselor Herger and seconded by Counselor Shay is that committee approve file ZA-08-2020 and forward the appropriate bylaw to council for first, second, and third readings.
Questions or comments for committee? Counselor Hutchinson, please.
Yeah, it's just a comment. I think I'm glad to see that people are making use of the new regulations that encourages people building granny flats, secondary dwellings. You know, I think that's part of the solution to some of the problems we've had coming through COVID. So it's good to see that people are making use of that, that process, and I'm in favor of this, this application.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else from the committee wish to speak or comment or question? All right, all right, calling the question. So as I call your name, please restate your name and how you're voting. Beginning with myself, Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this application. Counselor Herger.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shay.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. If you could please clear your screen. I'm now looking to the clerk for 5.5 to close the public meeting, the motion to do so. Clerk Sherbeck, could you please read the motion?
Thank you through you, your worship. The recommendation is that this public meeting closes at 4:35 PM.
Is there a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, are you moving this motion?
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, I'll move the motion.
Counselor, Counselor Hutchinson, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hutchinson, second the motion.
Thank you. Members of committee, as I call your name for the vote, please restate your name and how you are voting. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor of this motion. Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Shay.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Counselor Herger.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Motion carried. This public meeting is closed now. On item six, next meeting, Clerk Sherbeck, do we have an indication of our next meeting date?
Through you, your worship. We don't at this time have any applications pending, so no, there's no date set.
Fair enough. All right, we are now on item seven. I'm looking, well, first of all, Clerk Sherbeck, please read the motion.
Sure, thank you. Through you, your worship. The recommendation is that West Gray Committee of the Whole Planning adjourns at 4:37 PM.
One moment, please. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for our adjournment. Counselor Herger, are you moving the motion?
Counselor Herger, yes.
Thank you for that, and I'm looking for a seconder. Counselor Hamilton, are you seconding this motion?
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
All right, so all those in favor indicate with a check mark. Those not in favor indicate with an X mark. And as I call your name, please restate your name and how you are voting. Mayor Christine Robinson, I am in favor. Counselor Herger.
Counselor Herger, yes.
Counselor Shay.
Counselor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor Hamilton, yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Counselor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion carried. We stand adjourned until our next Committee of the Whole Planning meeting. Thank you, one and all.